Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I call over to our special city council meeting workshop of January 16th. Our second item on the agenda is a public hearing to discuss a wonderful recreational trails program, grant program possibility. Leroy, you want to take the lead on that?
I will. There's some other people that have been working on the project that may chip in or correct me if I get off course, but through the Oklahoma tourism or traction department, we have an opportunity to apply for a $300,000 trails grant. The grant would be $240,000 with $60,000 match. Aaron, just go put some slides up for me. You all have seen this form, but for those at the public hearing, we have tried to develop a master trail to tie all our parks together through a backbone of trails in our major areas in the community. Some of the trails, of course, will be new trails, and the new trails will build 12-foot wide so we can have multi-purpose trails with bicycle and walking and skating on the same trail. But then there will be areas, the older parts of town where we go through like downtown, there's not enough rideaway, so it'll be shared lanes with markings on it for bicycles and walking. But what we're trying to come up with backbone over the years that would tie into Highland Park and then come down Oklahoma, and this is a conceptual plan, so it could be modified some at this point. But then come back to downtown area, and then from there go across railroad tracks of Fifth Street, and then Fifth Street right before you get to the new bridge, we're planning on coming down along the bridge, the Ninth Street. This, the creek has changed course, so the main course is here now. So rather than come across here, we thought it best we'd be dealing with less water to go to the Oxbow part of the, or Beandridge Car and put a bridge across here because you're dealing with less water, and then develop a trail system down in what's kind of referred to as the Elbow area, go across the bridge on the other side, and then come back to Banner Park, the new park, which we plan to put out for bids in February. We would like to, the next opportunity to apply for a Safe Routes to School grant, which is 100% funding. We would like to do a sidewalk from Codrell Elementary to the new sidewalk on this overpass and give them a better way access to the skate park in the Banner Park when they have school hours. And then this is where we're planning on the sports complex. And we'll have a series of trails in the new sports complex that we'll want to tie in here. The next tap grant, we're in a position to apply for a sidewalk along Division from downtown to industrial to tie into the development there. I apologize, I got one earlier before. We also have mineral wells that we're going to tie into, it's not showing on that one. So it gives you an idea of the overall master plan. It's going to take a few years to do it, but what we want to do is have a master plan. When we all get, when we get all said and done, everything's tied together. And all new parks we do, we're putting walking trails in them even if they're not tied in with the plan that eventually they would be tied into this network or backbone. Aaron, if I could get you to go to the next slide. This is just a, this is one down in Edmond to give you an idea that it would be wide enough so that you can have walkers going both ways and then you could have bicycles. And that, that would be a 12-foot wide trail. Now if we could go to the next one. Banner Park, because it's going to tie into the one we're proposing tonight. Banner Park, of course, will have handicapped accessible playground equipment. We will have a, our very first splash pad in the city. And then we're going to have walking trails. And we left an area to build a parks maintenance building. We may not build that right away. We're still looking for opportunities, maybe purchase a building somewhere that might be cost, more cost effective than building a new one, but we're leaving the spot for it. Then we'll have a series of picnic shelters or pavilions. We've got some larger pavilions that people can rent for bigger events and family reunions. These would be smaller ones geared towards families bringing their kids to play in the park and having a place to have a picnic and some shade and those kinds of things. And again, we have budgeted for this out of our capital improvement, property tax, and plan to put this out for bids in February. We are almost through with the construction drawings. Now if we could advance to the next one. That's just a prototype sample of the type of picnic shelters we're going to build in Banner Park. And actually, when we get the slide that has a cost estimate on it, we will actually be under that cost estimate because on things like this, our public works crews actually go buy the materials and build this with the exception of the stone. And then we'll have to use stone masons to do the stone, but we're going to build those in-house. We're also going to do the site work, the dirt work, so we won't have a contract to do that. If we could advance. So our budget without the building is about $800,000, and it will be less because some of that work we'll be doing ourselves instead of contracting out. But that's our initial cost estimate. If we could advance again. The, the grant that we want to apply for this time that we're having the public carrying on, again, is we'll have shared bicycle and walking on Oklahoma, across the railroad tracks, down the Fifth, and at Fifth we'll go up to the bridge. And then on one side of the bridge, we'll do a trail that will go to the new Banner Park. And then on the other side of the bridge, from Fifth to Ninth, we'll put in the 12-foot trail and stop there. And our plans are next year, when we apply for the next grant, is to do the bridge itself to get across the creek, Beandridge Car, Elbow, and then start doing some trails in the Elbow area. Our plans right now are to stick to the road rightaways that are under the city's control. And the picnic pavilion over there is still in pretty good shape, upgraded, and maybe put some historic markers over there. With the concept over time, our thoughts are you could have a 5K run and not have to cross a major street. And then again, we want to tie collapse of the school, elementary school, into all this system when we get an opportunity to apply for the next Safe Routes to School project to do a sidewalk where it makes access to them easy. So that's, this grant, again, we're not doing this part because it's only a $300,000 grant. We're going to go from here to Fifth, and then Fifth will go from Fifth to Ninth on this side of the bridge, and then a shared access lane and road to Banner Park. Now if we could go to the next slide. The cost estimate, again, it's a $300,000 project. It's kind of hit, hard to hit it right on. This will be right now estimated at just around $307,000. And out of that, we will get a $240,000 grant. So we will have about $67,000 in this trails project, a local one. So we're trying to take our local money and make it go further by leveraging grants whenever we see an opportunity to get a grant. I believe that is the last slide that I had. So now if you want to open it up for discussion, or I'd be glad to entertain questions.
Yeah, some, some questions and comments first. The, the first slide that was up there that had the, the more global plan.
The master plan?
Uh, yeah. I'd like, yeah, that one. I'd like us to consider something that, that also comes down from Highland on Drexel all the way down to the proposed sports complex.
And you mentioned that at the last meeting that we had, and we just haven't updated the drawings since the last meeting on that. So the next generation of master plan, hopefully, we will have that in there.
I think that would be a good connectivity with our proposed sports complex and.
And you made, you made that comment, it's the last time we presented this. We just haven't did an update on the master.
Now, the, the other comment that I have is when I look at the application form, it looks like we've, we've checked off an awful lot of the blocks. We have some historical perspective. We have connectivity between neighborhoods. We have it so that it can be multi-used by bicycles as well as skaters and handicap.
I think tying into the new park with the future Safe Routes to School sidewalk, tying into Codrell School, I think there's a lot of pluses for our application, but you never know until they, and that award the grants.
But it's a, it's a, it's a, to me, it's really exciting, really exciting. Other city council, first of all, any?
I like it. I think it's a great plan. I've been kind of watching it anyway from afar, and this is great.
Okay. Public, any public comments or questions?
What over here, sir?
I have a couple of questions and a comment.
If you just state your name and.
Sure, and I'll tell you what, if you don't mind, I'll go over to the back of your head. My name is David Franklin, and I signed in. Two quick questions and then a kind of comment. Questions are, so your proposal is a trail adjacent to the roadway that you already have the rightway for. So is this going to be next to the road, is that correct?
If you, if you look at some trails in communities that you drive by, the emblems on the road where you share, it depends on how wide your road is. Like for example, we go down Oklahoma, there's some places along Oklahoma, once you get out of downtown going towards the temple, it's wide enough, we may be able to have a dedicated bike lane on one side or the other. And that will be marked off on part of the, of the road itself. There are some areas with the rightway downtown, it would be a shared lane, so you would see bicycle emblems painted on the road to let the traffic know that that road is being shared with a bicycle as part of a bicycle path.
Okay, but there's no separation?
Now, when we get into a narrow area like downtown, there's no opportunity for us to get more rightway downtown to have a separate. Now wherever we have an opportunity to separate, that's when we're going to do the 12-foot wide trail that would be separated.
Okay, and then, do you have an estimate on that bridge that's going to be in the next proposal? You say you have funds for the first round?
Estimate on cost?
On just the bridge, yeah.
I know we did one when I was in McAllister that wasn't to this length and wasn't made, but we spent about $200,000 on the bridge.
Okay. And the reason I wanted to stand up and not be talking back to your head. So I was on the Oklahoma Trails Advisory Board for about 15 years. And I was chairman of the board scoring these grants and for about half that time. So I've read hundreds of these grants, and I wanted to speak to the checking the boxes comment for just the second I could. Because it's right, once you're in the room, you never know how they're going to score, and it really has different criteria. But the way I scored grants, and I know some of the fellow board members scored these grants, we looked for multipliers. So if we put a dollar, this is federal money that flows through the state and it's redirected, so, and they aren't real big because like, you know, for example, you can't get the bridge in. If the bridge was in, it'd really shoot to the top, I'd just say that. But the, the amount of money's not big, so we looked for, did you record a lot of people at this meeting? But there's two types of support. You get the box that says support for the project. There's two types of support that you have to demonstrate. Number one is stuff like this, that people came to a meeting, there's no outcry against it, and there never is. I mean, I've never seen one where people protested getting grant money from the state to put in a trail. And you know, and you're going to get like the bank manager and the, you know, the house rep, the people to sign letters of support. But the more important support when I was scoring it is what leverage are you going to put in to maintain and utilize the trail? So if you can get a letter from the scouts, a letter from, you know, the baseball team, from the soccer team, whatever, people like that to come in and say, "We're going to use the trail as part of our activities, and we'll also do a service day once a year out at the trail." That will be a huge factor in increasing because what you're showing is not just, "Hey, we think it's a good idea to get free grant money," but we're actually going to put sweat equity in and support of the program. And therefore, the dollars that the state directs this way are multiplied by the free labor that you get from the volunteers that maintain the trail. So if you can say, you know, "We're going to have the, you know, the VFW organize an historic Guthrie Walk once a year, and they're going to take trash bags with them when they do it." And you can get the VFW to commit to that in writing, stuff like that. You get, you know, half a dozen of those. That will really improve your chances of scoring well in the grants. And I know when I was scoring them, no, I flipped right to the back and started looking at support first. And if they couldn't, it was just the city filling out an application, you know. And again, every one of them had, you know, like the, the principal of the school is going to say, "Yeah, we think it's a good idea for kids to have more places to exercise." That's expected, that's the minimum. Try to go beyond that to check some more boxes there. And I'd also say too, technically, I live just south of town, so I don't actually live in the city limits, but I'm more willing to help you. I assume you're applying for this fall, for just at the beginning of the process, on, on filling out the grant, but I'd be happy to review your grant before you turn it in and write a letter of recommendation for you as well.
Rebecca is actually going to be.
Okay, so Rebecca, I'll give you my card. It's got my cell phone address on there. And I'll write a letter for you and volunteer to come pick up some trash or something. I'm not on the board anymore, I left a couple of years ago, but I named my replacement in knowing him. So I'll, I'll do my best.
Good, we appreciate it. We now have you on speed dial.
Thank you very much for those comments and insights. Anybody else who would like to ask any questions of Leroy or have any comments about the proposals?
Are there any?
Lucy?
Yes, thank you.
And please.
Are there any?
Identify yourself.
Lucy Swanson. This is not at all what you're going to expect me to be asking you. Are there any plans to also go up to the high school and the middle school and over to Pine and, and connect all of that area as well?
Eventually, we would like to tie the whole community in. But what we're trying to do first is tie all of our parks in and tie some of the shopping areas in that people like downtown where you have people living in loft apartments, tie in the Walmarts in that area. We'll keep adding to the master plan. But the, the thing that we want to do everywhere we do projects, even if they're not connected at that time, go ahead and put the trail system in so that eventually we will do a connection to them. The other thing we'd like to do is come back along these trails on certain locations, like the trail that's going along the Noble between Fifth and Ninth and even maybe over in there is put what a lot of people refer to as workout stations. Eventually, I know a lot of towns, people have donated to pay for those. And then as you walk, you can stop and do stair steps and different exercises as well. We'd like to continue and think that this is a long-term project and investment on the city side where we continue to make it better and as a placemaking project to attract and retain young professionals in our community.
And keep the old ones like me.
Well, somebody.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Deana Porter, and I was on a little committee with trails, and we had turned in some ideas. But it was to purchase a plot of land that's about $19,000. We go from, oh, around Lincoln and I can't remember the side street there, right behind Ace Hardware in that area. And we had about three different ideas of going and connecting mineral wells. But my question is, are there, is any of this going to be lighted? Would there be an opportunity for businesses to buy park benches of some sort? They can advertise their name on that supposedly.
I think you will find that we're very receptive to public-private partnerships, whether it be private businesses, service clubs, anything we can do to enhance the trail system to make it more attractive, make it more usable. I think we would look at partnerships with, with private individuals, companies, service clubs to do that. Lighting, we've not decided on. The trails over in the Elbow area, we do have some residents over there that are, I guess the best way to say is squatters. So we'll probably put some signage up there, you know. That may be an area that is more thought of like a wilderness trail, like if you did along a levee or an old railroad track that you. So for safety purposes, we may put some lighting up there and probably put some signage up there to encourage people not to walk by themselves because it is an isolated area.
Yes, sir. I'm Ronald Wonzer, and I was wondering, you're going to put a walking bridge like at Perkins, that what you're going to do and go down all the streets that was over, across the bridge? Is that right?
Yes, but we're going to cross at Ninth. If we crossed at Perkins, that is the main channel of the creek, and it would be a much more substantial investment, and we would be dealing with higher floodwaters. The only time you get water if you cross at Ninth is when it backs up into that Oxbow area that's now no longer part of the main channel.
And you're going to redo the pavilion over in the park?
That's our desire, yes. And then put some historic markers up where like where the church was and some other.
You're talking about the park down in the elbow?
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Danny Smith here. I may have missed this part here. You've got a pair, two parallel colors running along Noble. So if, honestly, if I can refer to the sheets here. So are you talking about one bike path that run on the bridge itself and then one down below? In other words, would you have a bike path that run over the top of the bridge? Would you have a bike lane?
That's actually Oklahoma.
It's the one farther north.
Yeah, we're showing some, two different ones here.
Some of it's existing, some of it's existing sidewalk that we're tying into.
Some of it's existing sidewalk. If you notice down in the bottom corner, I. So in other words, that blue, the blue line there, is that, would that be below the bridge? And the green line would be on the bridge? In other words, are you going to have a bike?
There are sidewalks on the bridge.
Okay, so it would be a bike, designated bike lane over the bridge itself.
Not on the bridge, that's just a walking, you know, the, the bicycles would be geared more towards. Now, of course, you ride bicycle on any traffic line.
Right.
But, but the other would be off of the bridge, either on the north side or the south side.
And so that'd be down below then on the ground level?
But there will be pedestrian sidewalks on the bridge.
Right, so you could, okay. Second question was that, so on this, the bridge leading into the Noble Park area, so that would be, that would be parking. In other words, can you, will you be able to drive across that bridge? Are we not quite that far yet? Would you be able to drive across the bridge and park in Noble Park? So in other words, would that be a car-type bridge?
There, there, no. You, you're talking about the Elbow area?
Yes.
No, we're not going to, we'll have the bridge substantial enough to get maintenance equipment across and emergency response vehicles. But we will have a bower in the middle of the bridge so that we won't have people constantly trying to drive over there. Access will only be provided for emergency response and maintenance.
But I just think people would want to maybe stop and park there and then actually ride in? So they might have a little parking area?
We thought, had talked about that, but I guess my thoughts are, you know, we're tying it into downtown and the parking lot, but it's a walking trail. So it kind of defeats the purpose if we let you park here. I mean, if you go walk the trail, walk.
Well, the bicycle too, cycle too. A lot of those trails like you see in Edmond, Oklahoma City, people park right at the end.
But there will be parking at different areas.
There'd be parking at Banner.
Banner Park will have parks.
Banner Park has, I think, nearly 40 parking spaces, two or three blocks away.
If we find the need for more parking, we will look at.
So basically, the trail heads will be at some of those major parks like Highland or Banner or Mineral Wells.
Right.
We can have vernacular.
But no, no regular traffic will be allowed onto that area.
Yeah.
Correct, that's good.
Andrew Slivenson. You said something about where the church was, to have a historical marker. You're not thinking about just knocking down all the buildings that are there, are you?
There's not too many buildings that are standing that are in very good shape. I don't know, there's remnants of the church, but the church's not there. I don't know that we will necessarily remove any of those, but we'll put historic markers. I think it, it depends on, you know, the actual building. Like if it's a, a structure that is attractive nuisance, has not got any unique history or architectural features, we might consider removing. Remnants of buildings that either had historic significance or unique architectural features, then those would be classified things that we would want to maintain and then put a marker up on what they represented. So some of it would be a judgment.
Well, any of the, I would think any of the buildings there would be, make the trail more interesting to be able to go over and look at it as part of our history here.
Well, I, I think the educational opportunity along with walking, especially in the Elbow area, is phenomenal. I mean, for the, for especially younger generations to learn more about the history. I know that's what Lucy and her group have been working on for a couple of years, putting up some historical markers and creating an educational venue, if you will, as well as walking.
Yeah, it's not even all the buildings, it's just, it's just their hiking trail. But if you leave buildings there and have markers saying what, you know, telling about the buildings, you've got a destination for people to come out here and walk.
Have you been down in there, Andrew?
I've been around the perimeter, I've seen some of the structures and things over there. I've not figured out how to get my dirt bike over there yet.
We need to figure it out.
I've been riding around.
You've got to be a little careful too.
Kind of waiting for it to freeze over and maybe thought I could get across the river that way.
That's what we'll have.
Yeah, because I've been there.
Yeah, depending on how to walk.
Did you get over the river?
We walked.
How'd you get over there?
We walked.
Oh, because it was down at the time.
Ninth Street don't have a strip of water about a day wide to cross it.
Ninth Street.
You just slip all the way through, like.
Also, when we, kind of, we just had the planning stage just now, but also to include as a historical marker would be the high school. There was a high school in the Elbow.
Yes. In the hospital.
Remember, remember the historic markers, what's there. New construction with it being a floodplain will be pretty limited as far as any new construction that is going from the ground up. So we won't be able to do any type of new construction, but clearly markers and there's certain. Yes, yes.
Would it be helpful if I just kind of, kind of say what we've been doing? Maybe explain what we've been doing?
And you might tell them you approve.
Okay, yeah. So Guthrie Collaborative is a part of a project from Oklahoma Creative, and basically, the project was to find creative solutions to issues that might be in your community. And so when we started asking around our, our community about what, what would interest people, and my, my main interest is to get the community to work together, all the different, you know, types of people, all the vessels, to come together and find a common interest in something that they can really put themselves behind and, and, and learn about each other again because we don't have a whole lot of that in this day and age. So anyway, what I kept hearing is this elbow, and it's mostly his fault and his fault. The elbow area needs, we need to preserve that history over in the elbow area. It's a beautiful area and, and the community, it's just sitting there and wasting away, and there's just a ton of, of opportunity over there. And so what we did is we started talking to other people in the community, and sure enough, there's a health aspect to it, obviously. There's a history aspect to it, tremendous history aspect to it, and, and community development, economic development because of bringing people. And, and community development, economic development because of bringing people to the downtown area from outside of the area to, to go and spend time over there. So what we've been talking about, working towards for the past couple of years with this group is basically to, to do what you've been saying, to, to create some, some types of trails, some way to access the area over there and primarily to preserve the history. And, and that vein, we've been doing interviews with people that lived over there. We've been trying to get audio and/or video of, of a lot of the people. We've talked to relatives of people that lived there, maybe a long, long time ago. And, and we've had some people that have just done a whole lot of research and, and we've gotten with the territorial museum and similar. Anyway, all that to say, the history part is gonna be hopefully tremendous. We're hoping at some point to have, have some sorts of placards and then be able to get your phone and, and hear the person that lived there talk about how life was when they lived there. And so we've got lots of great ideas and this is a very complimentary plan, I think, for what we have. So that's about it, so.
Aren't there still people that own their lots over there?
Yes, that's, that's what slows down.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I, Ben? I have a question related to that. Isn't it true that part of this is designated as a park and then like this over here is still lots? So this part here would be more open to doing what we would do. It may not be the history there, but you could have, you know, like an off-road trail too.
Our thoughts were if we use the road network that was in the elbow area, that would give us an opportunity. One, it's already under the city's control. Number two, it would allow us to tie in to the various properties that we want to showcase or put historic markers. The city does, of course, own the park that was down there as well. And the city has purchased part of the property down there, but there's still substantial private ownership.
Cause I mean, you get bicycle riders and there's those people gonna be making trails in there, I can just tell you right now. You're gonna have dirt bike riders, I mean not motorcyclists, but that'd be kinda nice to have a little off-road trail through there also.
Yes.
I'm curious why the elbow was phase two or the next phase and the, improving the existing sidewalks is the, is in, in front of that. It seems like the elbow is unique and you already have sidewalks now, which are adding our bike lanes and things like that. I mean, I'm curious, have you thought about flipping the, the progression here?
Well, the, the problem is if you do the elbow area first, you have no way to access it. And so our thoughts are if we do phase one, would be a trail that would tie in from, on the south side of the new bridge, you would have a trail that would go from Ninth Street, which would be the first phase to get you to where you go across on Ninth Street to get into the elbow, take you back to downtown. And then when you go on the other side of the bridge, there would be a trail system to take you to the new Banner Park. And we just thought that was the first.
Field trip.
Scale. And then the safe route to school would be a different project, that sidewalk to tie them into having access down to the skate park in Banner Park for school outings from, from the elementary school.
Field trip. Tonight? Tonight. Do you have any? No, no other, no other comments? Okay, do you have any final comments? We'll be taking this up at, at council meeting.
And considering the resolution to authorize staff to apply for the grant, we are working, we collaborative, I think, is gonna write us a letter of support. We have some other groups that are willing to write letters of support, so.
Yeah, we'll.
We'll be rounding those up in the next few days and at the end of the month is when we'll be turning the application in.
All right. Very good. How about the else? Last chance. The councilman? Nope. It's the last thing on the agenda. We're adjourned.